Welcome, everyone. We're called to order at 1 o'clock on the dot here. The way we're going to handle this meeting is we'll have Waste Management come up and present whatever they'd like to. I know they had a video that they may or may not show. I'd like to give them a few minutes to do that, a reasonable opportunity to present where things are at. And then I've asked staff to put together a timeline over the past few months, going back to October of 2018, that shows what's happened insofar as the county's interactions with Waste Management have gone. And they will go ahead and present that after Waste Management has their opportunity. So I don't know, Ms. Ryder Hicks, if you're going to come up, or who would like to come up from Waste Management?
We are Florida directors.
Okay. Sure. And I'm not going to start the clock, so you all have as long as you need.
Just me.
Yeah, if you would please, thank you. And just for the clerk's benefit, if you could put your name and your city of residence in the record.
Certainly. My name is Lisa McKnight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lisa McKnight. I represent-
There may be a second mic, too, if that's easier for you off the side.
Okay. No, I think we're good, if you can hear me okay. So, good afternoon, County Manager, Brevard County Board of County Commissioners, and the Solid Waste Staff. My name is Lisa McKnight, and I represent Waste Management. I've had the privilege of meeting several of you, and for those that I haven't, my career with Waste Management is just over 25 years. And I'm part of our leadership team, and I reside in Tampa, 3411 North 40th Street in Tampa. I oversee about 30 counties here in Florida, and Brevard being one of them. So I'm very disappointed to have to be standing before you today regarding our service during this COVID-19 pandemic, when you so graciously awarded us new contracts starting October 1st. That allowed our long-term partnership to continue for many more years to come. On February 11th, you praised our service, and we were eager to, we are very eager to return to that expectation. So during the recent July 7th board meeting, Dina Ryder Hicks spoke of the impacts of COVID-19, our operations, and we stressed some of the action items that would recently take place, including the expanded landfill time and working our drivers to the maximum DOT hours of 14. Because this meeting occurs during the service time that we provide to Brevard County, we had asked some drivers to kind of talk to you about what's taking place in your community. So with that, if you could show the video?
Logan, if we could roll that, please?
Hard. With the amount of garbage that we've had since the pandemic started, it's like the double-day Thanksgiving for the first three months of the pandemic.
It is a lot more out there to pick up, and it makes it very difficult for me to complete my routes each day.
COVID-19 is making it harder to complete the routes because you have a lot more garbage out, you know, a lot more garbage on the ground. Before the COVID-19, I was working about 51, 52 hours a week, and now it bumps up to 63, 65 hours a week. And, you know, that's plus working on my day off.
It's taking a toll personally on my body, working constant hours. Usually was working 48 hours a week in yard waste, five days a week, now it's close to 68. The extra manual labor, you got to do double routes.
Was averaging 54 hours a week, and I'm averaging anywhere from 64 to 68 hours a week now. So add another day to my six-day schedule.
So I wake up at about 4 o'clock in the morning, and then I leave my house at 4:30, and then I don't get home until almost sometimes 7:30 at night, depending on traffic that I hit. So, I mean, I get home, I go to sleep basically right away. So that's it, I'm just at work all day.
Daily work life, getting to work, 5:30, 5:45 in the morning, working all day, not getting off until 7:30, not making it home till 8 o'clock. You know, all you got time to do is get something to eat, take a shower, and go to bed, and try to wind down, which is virtually impossible, before you come back in the next day and do it all over again.
You know, getting home late, you know, tired, kids, I have three kids at home that always want to play with me and jump on me, and even though I'm tired, I still fight through and do the best I can to play with them and keep them entertained, even though, you know, my body's taking a toll.
I'm a single dad, I got two teenage daughters, so working from, I leave my house at anywhere from 4:00 to 4:15 in the morning, and I don't get home till after 7:30, 8:00. That's a strain on all of us.
So, thank you. So in this time of uncertainty, our drivers and their families have gone above and beyond to help each other and the community that they live in here in Brevard. I know you want me to stand before you and promise that our situation will be fixed tomorrow, and we are trying, and mutually agreeable solutions, such as I stated, the expanded landfill hours, and we now have a dedicated fast lane at the scale house. Those are making significant improvements that we've seen even this week. I need to stress with the commission that we are providing all of the services in this contract. We do know that our routes are running significantly delayed. When we take a look at each of the over 84,000 single-family homes, they have five potential touchpoints from Waste Management. You have your two times per week trash, your one-time-per-week recycle, your one-time-per-week yard waste, and your one-time-per-week bulk pickup. So when you calculate that over the month, we touched the unincorporated residents in Brevard County over 1.8 million times. So we provide reports to Solid Waste Staff, and for June, we had 204 complaints. So if you take those complaints, whether per service or even for the 84,000-plus homes, it's less than 1%. And not to mitigate, because one complaint is more than one that we should have. But when you look at that, that means that 99% of the residents appear to be understanding of the service delays and challenges that we have due to COVID-19. So we continue to actively recruit, hire, train, and onboard new drivers every day. We've recently had 60 interviews, and we have 12 offerings out there. But understand, at the same time, we have not wavered from our commitment to safety excellence and our mission to our zero safety culture. Our traditional 100 Days of Summer Safety, which is an internal safety competition, I'm very proud to report that the Melbourne and Cocoa sites are ranked number one. Despite all of this uncertainty, you should be very proud of the drivers and the local leadership of the operations team here that are continuing to provide dedicated service to Brevard County safely. So with that, that's all I have.
I've got some questions, not seeing any lights here. So the video, just out of curiosity, were any of the drivers that were shown working routes here in Brevard?
Yes, they are strictly unincorporated Brevard. We had two from north and two from our south operation.
Okay, so obviously then the video would be representative of the conditions in Brevard County as a whole, or at least for the most part?
Correct. Correct. And also beyond just Brevard County, even the entire state of Florida.
And let me ask, as far as the volume of garbage, one of the fellows, and I may be off with the exact wording, mentioned that there's a lot more out there to pick up. Is he referring to residences, to businesses, or?
It's residents. We're focusing right now on the residential line of business. The commercial line of business has had significant volume decrease, and that's why sometimes we've had the ability to pull drivers from one line of business to another. But when I watched the videos in detail, because that's obviously a condensed version, I was somewhat surprised to learn that we're picking up a lot of material that's even outside the carts. So we have an abundance of material in the carts, outside the carts, and increased volume for both trash and recycling, and of course, your unlimited waste that's here.
Mr. Tobias?
Thank you, and thank you for putting together that informative video. I'm very fortunate that those drivers working all that extra time had the opportunity to make such an informative video. The increased volume that you're seeing, that's COVID-related?
Yes. There's many stay-at-home, obviously work-from-home orders. You have the schools that are closed right now.
Understandable.
So you have much more material, and people are doing, you know, home improvement events, too.
Got it. So that's county-wide, correct?
That's all over the United States.
Okay. So if you heard that volume had declined 10.3% in the second quarter of 2020, primarily due to COVID-related pandemic, and with 16% drop in industrial and 18% in landfill, that's just crazy numbers, right?
So we do know that the Solid Waste Team here has pulled together some overall reports related to-
This is not county stuff, but I've just pulled, are the numbers, the numbers that I just told you, have you heard those numbers?
I'm not sure of the numbers you're speaking of, no.
Okay. I'll enlighten you, I'd be more than willing to share this with you. Waste Management announced second-quarter earnings this morning, and in there, congratulations, by the way, earnings each month progressed with June as the strongest month so far. So congratulations. $3.56 billion. But I looked at your press release, and it says, "Volume has declined 10.3% in the second quarter of 2020, primarily due to the COVID pandemic." Not mine, this is your company. Can you explain how Brevard County is so different than the rest of Waste Management is COVID-different here than?
When you look at overall volume declines, yes, that is correct, overall volume declines. We're speaking of residential line of business volume increases.
Eight volumes, your numbers, 13% decrease for residential, 16 for industrial, 18 overall in landfill, all decreases, mind you.
Year-over-year increases could be the difference in contract losses. I mean, there's a lot of factors that play into volume changes.
These are your numbers.
I completely understand, but I was preparing for this meeting, I didn't have an opportunity to-
To look at your numbers.
...listen to our earnings report today.
I did. So I take this very seriously, and if I'm going through your documents, for future reference, I'd expect the same diligence that we all have. I'd expect that from you. So I appreciate maybe less time on making videos and more time of actually coming with realistic numbers is just a suggestion as we move forward. I'd be more than willing to share it with you, but of course, it's available online. Again, congratulations on the $3.56 billion this quarter.
Let me ask, maybe you can give us a little bit of information on what Waste Management's been doing over the past several weeks or months with respect to hiring drivers, whether permanent or temp? Has there been any of that, or have you looked at shifting folks from the commercial routes to residential routes? I'm just, I'm trying to get an understanding in terms of what's been done to try to mitigate the issue, and what can be done moving forward to put everyone in a better place. Because just as uncomfortable as it probably is to be here, it's uncomfortable for all of us. Maybe not to the same degree at the moment, but believe me, I wish we didn't have the issue, I wish we didn't have the constituent complaints, but the only way to avoid that is to get us back where we were before. You said earlier, I think it was February, that we complimented your service? I agree. I didn't have any complaints. The issues that were brought to my attention by constituents back then were few and far between, and every time I called up Dina, she made it right very quickly. But obviously, something happened, whether it's entirely COVID, or mostly COVID, or partly COVID, something changed from service that was great to what we're seeing now. So I just, I'm hoping you can tell us what you're doing insofar as the driver situation is concerned.
So, yes, so there are a combination of things. So when we look at when COVID first started, we did not see significant impacts here in Brevard County or even across the state of Florida. We started to see more impact to us with COVID at the beginning of June following Memorial Day. So we do have driver callouts that take place because of the COVID-19. There's also self-quarantine that's required if drivers come in contact with potentially their spouse, or, you know, anyone else in the family, they would have to self-quarantine for 14 days, or until their test comes back negative. And we have a constant turnover of drivers, whether voluntary or involuntary. And as I spoke of our safety focus, if there is a termination that needs to be had, we still have to continue to do that. So we continue to have driver turnover during this time, combined with the slowing of our hiring process, you know, the time it takes to onboard a driver is between three to six months, depending on what kind of experience they bring to the table. We've always been very proud of our local training center located in Lee County. We've had to shut that down because of COVID, so we're doing more driving, or excuse me, more onboarding locally within each one of the business units, and it's taking a lot longer. We had to stop our hiring process to go through, how do we reevaluate the process and start over? You know, you can't, we couldn't do face-to-face interviews, you're now doing virtual interviews. All of that had to change. So it slowed down the process.
How long a period of time was it shut down? Were we talking a couple weeks, or a month?
I would say no more than two months, that it was in order for us to reevaluate how we have to go through the hiring and the onboarding process to do that.
So is there, is there an effort at this point to increase the hiring to account, or to partially at least offset for that two-month period where there weren't any folks being brought onboard?
Yeah, as I stated, there have been over 60 active interviews just here for Brevard County, and we have 12 offers out for driver positions.
Is that typical, or I'm just, I have no idea if that's a high number, a low number, or standard?
It's higher than usual because of the delayed time that it took to backfill some of those open positions.
Don't see any further lights. I don't know if anyone has any questions before we turn it over to staff? Commissioner Tobias, please.
How many spots open are there?
In Brevard County?
Sure.
I would have to really defer to Mike. I believe it was around 17.
Mike Lewis, Senior District Manager, 7921 Strong Park. Just to comment on two things. We're going to answer a question about the number of interviews we've done and positions we have open, but I just wanted to share some, Tony's data.
Please.
The volume, okay? Here in Brevard, we have not seen a decline in our volumes, all right? I know the staff, they track tickets and trips and so forth, but just in the north, from January to February, month over month, we're seeing almost 2,000 tons more year-over-year. It's not small weight, that's a lot of weight. In the south, just Brevard County, 4,200 tons more year-over-year. So when our drivers say there's garbage on the ground, all the carts are full, that's a fact. We had an early summer program, starting in March. We normally expect that type of volume starting in May into June, see that summer volume with kids out of school, people at home. So the volume is up. Now, I can't speak for Miami, Palm Beach, Jacksonville, but I can speak for Brevard County, been 11 years in this county. We have 17 open positions here in Brevard County that service this area, 17 positions. We've interviewed 659 people, and 12 said, "I want to do this work." Reason only 12, when we explain the type of work we're doing, they say, "No, I can't do that. I want to drive." Well, you got two drivers on the back of a two-man truck, and you drive half a day, you work the back of the truck half a day, but most of the candidates in this area want to drive. And if that's the case, that's not the type of driver I need. I need someone that's willing to get on the back of the truck and work also to help us with these 4,000 tons, all right? Other reasons that we only got 12 offers out is that one guy, they want to do an interview by text message. I can't do an interview by text message, I got a list of questions I have to ask you. If that's how you want to do business-
Creative.
Well, I'm not that creative. So we are interviewing, we do interviews Monday through Friday. We've been doing probably eight to nine per week in the south part of the county, and probably seven, eight in the north part. But we've seen, if we interview 10 people, we're going to make an offer probably two, just based on what it takes to do this type of work. It's not easy work. It's really not. I've done 32 years, and I tell my drivers all the time, I couldn't do it no more in the back of the truck, it's just, it's too hard. It really is.
Out of curiosity, what's the base pay typically?
We start our drivers out at $16 an hour. And that's coming in, first nine days, all you're doing is classroom work. Learn our rules, learn our equipment, and once that's done, then we'll put you with a veteran driver to slowly work you into the solo role. And the reason we have our openness is, I'm just going to give a few examples. We have, we do random drug tests, and when people test positive, that's no deal for us, you have to go. We have drivers stealing from our residents. Once that's made known to us, you got to go. It's just that simple. So like Lisa said, when it comes to safety, there's no compromise. You violate, can't have you out here driving around in the general public causing problems.
I appreciate it. Let me, let me ask, in terms of Waste Management, I don't know how it's structured as far as whether there's some ability to take drivers from areas that are nearby that have lower volume to shift them in areas that have higher volume. Does Waste Management have any kind of a provision for that? So say, for instance, Palm Beach has a major drop in their tonnage, and we have an increase, can we take some of them even on a temporary basis, just to kind of even things out if they don't have as much work as they used to down there, and we have more up here?
Well, sure. We're doing that now, since, I want to say, the middle of April. We've had six drivers from Orlando every day in this county working.
On the residential lines?
Residential line of business. In Brevard County, they're working. Four of those guys working in the county right now today, other two is in the city of Milton.
As far as the wages for the folks that are starting up, has it been pretty consistent over the past year? Is it higher or lower on account of COVID?
Well, I want to say late 2018, early 19, everybody got $2 an hour raise, everyone.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. I'm just hearing, I'm sorry, I'm just hearing a bunch of excuses. We have record unemployment right now, and you're saying that you're having trouble getting qualified applicants. The answer to this is just, you know, speak with our firefighters, the wages aren't enough. Okay? So it's a supply and demand type of function, and, you know, I'm not arguing that it's hard work, and I'm not arguing that I don't want people stealing other folks' trash, or whatever they're stealing. But again, these are, you are a multi-billion-dollar company that are coming to us and completing in a contract, right, that you have trouble making hiring. I'm, you know, I work, I work for government because, you know, I wouldn't be all that successful in a private enterprise. But neither are you, and you're coming to us to make excuses. And I do want to follow, I do want to follow up on this, because I still, you know, I'm not a statistician, but when I'm looking system-wide, you're seeing great decreases in the volume, and you're telling me we're seeing great increases. Where, you know, 2,000 tons or 10,000 tons, do you, how did you, how did you come up with those numbers? Do you weigh, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not in the business.
Well, we, every day, we got a dump out, and I get a ticket from the county landfill, and the ticket is recorded in our office.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Please.
Can I, can I ask?
Any staff you'd like?
Yeah. This is dangerous, because I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to the question. Yuri, maybe? Sorry? And you can pass this one. Can you substantiate those numbers, that the tickets, it sounds like he's using our data, the ticket coming, is that, is that what you're seeing?
Is this, Mike, okay? Yeah.
Yeah, it's picking you up.
The way our system works is, is you go into, we got several facilities. Each facility except for the Titusville Transfer Station has scale house attendants, and they have unmanned scales. Unmanned scales, you go in, you weigh in, it issues a ticket either on paper, electronically, or both. Those go into an account that Waste Management has with us, that's called residential, and there's another one that's called commercial. So the, they have to put in the account number, and the weight of the truck empty is already there, the computer subtracts, adds what it has to do, and then comes out with the net weight. Our figures are, I did February, March, March, April, and May, and I did a comparison between 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. My figures pretty much show a decrease in all those three numbers.
So help me, other than bad math, or just flat-out not being honest, how, how, how would you, how would you, how would you account for-
Another thing, these numbers do not include recycling, because recycling goes directly to their facilities, I don't see those tickets. So I'm, I don't know the explanation of the discrepancy between the numbers.
Commissioner Tobias, why don't we give them an opportunity, maybe they have some explanation, I don't know one way or the other?
Sure.
Please.
So Yuri and I had a very brief conversation. We have not had an opportunity to compare report to report. They are like comparing apples to oranges. You have that entire Brevard County of all disposal. Here today, we're discussing the unincorporated Brevard County contract, and the information that Mike spoke of is related to this unincorporated Brevard County contract. We have to have weight tickets on every single load that we dispose, whether it's trash, yard waste, or if it's recycling, and it's tied directly to the municipality of origin. The reports that Yuri is speaking to do not tie out to origin. So we would have to go back and look at those to compare origin to origin.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
So I guess disproportionately, if you live in unincorporated, you have far more trash than those that don't live in unincorporated, and you must be worse than nationally, because again, the numbers are down double digits, so.
Honestly, I can say yes to that, because most of our contracts do not have unlimited yard waste and unlimited bulk waste. Many of the contracts across the state and across all of the states have very limited yard waste disposal, and they have very limited, they have limited bulk. Unincorporated Brevard County has unlimited materials, curbside.
And that accounts for the difference between a substantial decrease and what you're arguing is a substantial increase?
I'm speaking to the facts of the reports that we pulled for the Brevard unincorporated county contract.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Yuri, can, can we, and I understand this just was called, can we, can we filter, can we filter that out? I imagine if Waste Management claims that they can, that you have that ability, and if it's not possible, that also calls into the question the numbers that were just presented to us.
No, they, in our system, it's not possible, because we do not require them to input the origin of the garbage, just that it came from Brevard County. Number one is because it's prepaid through the assessment, and there has been no consideration about whether it came from incorporated versus unincorporated. We already assume that the trend is always the same, whether you're in the city or not.
So can you, how, how would they pull the numbers if you don't have access, and they're using our scales in order to do that? I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure that out.
If I was going, if I was going to be doing it, I would have to look through their system to find out the truck number, look at their system to find out the route, figure out if the route is inside-city limits or outside-city limits, in order to be able then to separate it, and you can, you can confirm or that or not.
Yuri, let me ask you, if, even if you don't track the city of origin, do you track which entity is bringing it to you, so whether it's Waste Pros versus Waste Management versus anyone else?
This is exclusively Waste Management. Waste Pro has their own account, that it's a commercial account and a residential account.
So are-
So this is just exclusive, the numbers I pulled are just exclusively Waste Management.
Do you have the ability to filter based on residential lines versus commercial lines or other lines?
Yes, sir, because they're two separate accounts.
Okay, so the numbers that you're talking, where you've seen a decrease, have been only Waste, that we're talking about now are only Waste Management, and they're only the residential lines?
Yes, sir. I did not look into commercial, because I assumed that there would be a decrease because commercial was shutting down.
And when we're talking about those lines, we're talking about regular household trash, right? Because I know they do recycling, they do regular trash, and they do yard waste as well.
We are not talking about, recycling is not included in here, because it goes directly to their facility.
Okay.
The rest of the garbage comes to our facilities.
Okay, so it would be the regular household trash plus yard waste?
Garbage, yard waste. Garbage, yard waste.
Perfect. Anything further, Commissioner Tabia?
Not till I hear more.
Okay, if you, if you'd like, I'd be happy to give you all a few more minutes, otherwise I'll turn it over to staff and see where this goes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bate?
Thank you, Commissioners. You had asked staff to prepare a timeline from October 2018.
Yes, sir.
To the present, so I'll, I'll try to go through it very, as briefly as I can, but to, to highlight the dates that were significant during that period.
Please.
In October, in October 22nd, 2018, Solid Waste sent a letter to Waste Management about checking whether they would be willing to extend their contract for curbside collection and recycling for an additional year. That contract was due to expire on September 30th, 2020. A couple of weeks later, on November 2nd, we received a letter from Waste Management confirming that they would not renew that agreement. As a result of that, the, we came back to the board on January 8th, and the board directed staff to prepare a RFP for the franchise areas with a variety of options. As you recall, we, we put out that RFP, and during the course of the next six to eight months, went through that RFP process, came back to the board, and in November of 2019, the board directed staff to enter into negotiations with Waste Management, who was the low bidder of, a result of that RFP process. They made a, we, we conducted those negotiations, and a variety of meetings were conducted by the negotiating teams, and that we received a letter on January 28th from Waste Management to Central Services, providing a revised proposal. We continued with that, and eventually, on June 1st, we entered into an agreement, once the board approved, on February 11th, us moving forward with that. On July 3rd, we received the letter, so after the June 1st agreement was signed, on July 3rd, we received a letter from Waste Management concerning the recycling services and, and impact of COVID. Four days later, at the board meeting, Waste Management was present, and the board authorized the county manager to continue with the current contract with no changes in service. On the 14th of July, one week later, Solid Waste sent to Waste Management an email requesting information on all routes that were not completed for any reason from February 1st to the present, and the number of residences that were not picked up because of incomplete routes or routes left over from that day. They acknowledged, that same day, they acknowledged receipt of the request and said they would begin working on it. They indicated on July 21st that they intended to have a report to the, to us by August 4th about that. On July 24th, I, together with John Denninghoff, met with Waste Management representatives. They went through the process of the things that they had been doing, the, the work they, they were doing in terms of hiring, bringing people from other areas, as you've heard, from Orlando, and their green team to try to supplement the, the, the problems they were having with deficiencies in, in their staffing, their efforts to go through a 90-day recruitment. They only had two at that time offers that were outstanding, so you've heard today that they have an additional 10 since that, that time, apparently. And we emphasized to them at that time of the, the need for an expedited report from them because we wanted the information about the, we wanted to know so we could address the issue from a liquidated damages standpoint of what was in the contract, and we told them that's what we would be doing because that was the way to put economically, to put pressure on them to not only get the positions filled, but most important to us, get those routes done on the dates that they were committed to get them done. On, on July 28th, we, we had this, you called the special meeting for today. Solid Waste did send a, a follow-up email yesterday to Waste Management, asking them when we could expect that expedited report. They confirmed to us that they were sticking with the initial date that they told us, which was August 4th, or they would have it no later than August 4th. So, I don't know if they'll be able to get it to us before then, but that's where things stand in terms of the timeline. Yuri does have the, you had asked a variety of other questions.
Yes, sir.
And I think Yuri's prepared to, to respond to those, if you want.
If you would.
Okay. There, there are some questions regarding the collection MSBU, and what it does, what happens to the money, and the fine money, where it goes to.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much, the, the collection is a municipal solid, or municipal service benefit unit. What that means is there, there's a, it's an enterprise fund. The money stays all in that fund. It's all going to one fund, and every money generated from that fund stays in that fund. They're used, the money is used for the contractor payments, the indirect charges, tax collectors, and property appraiser charges for using the database. Over 90% of the money goes to the payment of Waste Management. Any fines that are taken or assessed against Waste Management, what happens is that the payment to Waste Management, and, and I'll get to the details later, but bottom line is that they get reduced out of the payment to Waste Management, and the money stays in the collection fund, and it becomes part of the cash carry forward. Under the current contract, the residents pay about 67 cents for each time the truck stops in front of them. Those are four stops. Bulk, I didn't count because not everybody has bulk waste, which, and the, every time they miss a collection over 20, it's, it's a $50 fine.
For each missed?
Each miss.
Wow.
Yes, sir. For each verified miss.
And when you say a verified miss, what, what is that?
Because we, we sit down with Waste Management, and we go through them on a monthly basis, and what we do is we look at their system, we pick out from their list, and we sample. I want to see the information regarding this miss of pickup. If it's valid, their system is going to show that there, there was no stop at that point, or that the truck did not go through that street, or missed, or pretty much didn't stop there. The, their system shows when the truck goes by, the time it goes by, the time it stops in front of the house. So, if I'm seeing in their system that the truck stopped in front of their house, the house in question, the assumption is that there was something to be picked up, because if not, they wouldn't have stopped. There, there's no reason for the driver just to stop in every house when there's no cart to be picked up. That's what I mean by, by verifying the information.
Do you have a typical number for what we'd get on average for missed pickups? Let's say if we didn't have COVID a year ago?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll be getting to that pretty soon.
Okay, please.
We already talked about the, the tickets to the solid waste and the tonnage, so I'm going to skip over that. And the calculations of fines, what we do is we, we, there's two ways of receiving it. You can complain directly to the Solid Waste Management Department, in which we have our own database, and we keep track of, of the complaints. We, and those, we forward those complaints to Waste Management, meaning to the supervisors and, and so forth, for them to take care of. The customer can also call Waste Management directly, and it's in their system. So, in those monthly meetings that we have, we got to merge both information together to come up with how much, how much, if any, there's, there's going to be any fines. And the nature of the complaint also, because there, there's various things that, that can go wrong. Oil spills, there's cart damages, there's, you know, missed pickups, and several other instances which they can be subject to fines. And then we reduce the amount of the payment to Waste Management by the amount of the fines. Then, I also have something that recently, since February, we started receiving emails from, from Waste Management, and, and these are the emails received. They are not the routes, they are not per route, they're per emails. So, in the month of February, we received the eight emails that, you know, routes were not going to be completed. March 3, April 8, May 8, June 10, and, and July 23, up to now. So, again, those are emails, they are not routes, not completed. And an email can contain one route, or it can contain, contain several routes. We have also compiled some information regarding the complaints by district since February. We're not sure if this is complete because we scrambled at the last moment, meaning this morning. So, district, this is complaint since February to, today. District 1 has received 54 complaints, District 2, 34, District 3, 42, District 4, 24, and District 5, four complaints. We have, we have, and again, by we, I mean the Solid Waste Management Department, has received complaints from February to July, and February was 70, March was 80, April was 58, May was 42, June was 90, and in July, 278 complaints. So, July has definitely had a spike in it.
And that's just your department alone?
Yes, sir. That is, that is just my department. And again, these are complaints received by my department, not only for missed pickups, but they include other things. I will tell you that probably nine, over 90% of it is missed pickups. I'm not going to go through this again. The majority of, of the fines that, that we're looking at are missed pickups, and those are $50 per instance after Waste Management exceeds 20.
Per month?
There's a 20 instance that they can miss a pickup before they start getting fined.
And that's done on a, on a monthly basis?
Yes, sir. On a monthly basis, and that's as per the contract. So, we have assessed the, the following number of fines through, through the years, and, and 2013, and this is from the beginning of the contract, which was October 1st, so 2014, or 2013 is a short month, or short year, that was $52,900. In 2014, it was $120,000. 2015, $36,200. 2016, $69,400. 2017, $23,640. 2018, $25,100. 2019, up to now, is 20, is $49,000, and 2020 is being reviewed, and, and we haven't had a, an opportunity of matching. My staff has been, the person that takes care of it was home for three months because of COVID, and I have another two absences in, in the staff, but we, we have calculated our numbers, but we're missing the other side of the story. Like I told you before, Waste Management database, our database, so until they're merged together, we can't come up with a, with a number. And we're waiting for the reports to come in. Those reports are, are going to have to be reviewed and, and seen as to what the results are going to be. You also mentioned something about a feasibility study.
Yes, sir.
The feasibility study was requested when, at the time that the Waste Management contract was approved, and it was requested that by the end of the contract, meaning the contract that we're going to get into, the Waste Man, or Solid Waste, complete a feasibility study about taking over the collection. We are currently estimating that it would cost about $300,000 to do the feasibility study, and it takes about six months to complete. We also had, since we do not have any kind of equipment, meaning we, again, our department and the county, do not have any kind of equipment, we looked at the Waste Management RFP, the last one that they submitted, and according to the numbers, if I got them right, in the north, we would have to add 66 employees, in the south, we would have to add 65 employees, plus the support staff for these employees. And when I'm saying the support staff, I'm not talking about clerical staff, I'm talking about the mechanics that have to fix these trucks and, and so forth. We're also talking about, again, if I understood the RFP correctly, 77 pieces of equipment. These pieces of equipment are expensive, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars each one. If I'm not mistaken, and Waste Management can correct me if I'm wrong, they're north of 300, 350,000 each one. So, you would be talking about an investment of around $20 million. Again, all this would go into that feasibility study, but these are the numbers that I was able to, to grasp. One, one noted problem with it is that currently, the Waste Management trucks, and this just occurred to me about five minutes ago, there are liquid gas, our system is diesel, so we would not be able to fuel them. And lastly, I wanted to go over the steps that Waste Management has requested us to take, and we have taken. We opened up the Sarno Transfer Station since Jul, July 7th. We're opening it up from 6:00 AM just to, for Waste Management, Tuesday through Friday. So, that means an hour and a half early each day. The central disposal facility, which is the Cocoa Landfill, since July 14th. As a last point, I will add that on the south area of the county, since we are opening up earlier, I have noticed a decrease in the amount of complaints that we're getting from the south. I have not noticed any decrease in the north.
Now, let me ask you, Yuri, as far as the feasibility study, you mentioned it may take six months to complete that. If the feasibility study is done, it takes six months to complete, do you have any idea, even a guesstimate, of what it would take to put in place what we would need to, to acquire all that equipment, get people onboard, trained? I mean, is that a year? Is that two years? How long a period of time would that be?
No, sir. You're, you're looking at about a lead time of around six months to a year for the equipment. So, you would order the equipment, you would hopefully get good information regarding when it's supposed to arrive around, you would start recruiting probably about two months before the equipment arrived in order to do the proper training. You would have to have, probably change our fueling system, even if we were to maintain diesel, we would have to expand our, our fuel system. Bottom line, I think it, it's going to be around a year, a year or two, maybe 13, 14 months.
I'm just, I'm wondering if we can structure that feasibility study, not so that it gets complete by the time we're finished with this contract that we're getting into, but complete far enough in advance that we'll have that year-plus buffer to be able to implement whatever the findings are if we decide to go forward with it? You know, my thought, and I, I don't remember the exact figure on the most recent contract with Waste Management, but it was a lot more than 20 million. If it's a $20 million investment on our part, and we can guarantee, moving forward, that we have more direct control over the, the routes, I can tell you, I live in Rockledge, they do, as a municipality, their own waste pickup. I think in the, in the time I've been there, I've had one issue with them. I called them, and the same day, they came and fixed it. I'm not saying that I've been dissatisfied, or that most folks have been dissatisfied with Waste Management up until recently, but it's, it's nice to have other options. And again, I'm, I'm perhaps hesitant to have the government perform a service that could be handled by private industry, but if this is something that continues to drag out, even if it's infrequent, it would be nice to have that other option and know what's available when we're contracting next go-around. Truth be told, a $20 million investment over the, the scheme of, of years really seems pretty trivial, given the amount that we spend on these contracts. So, I, I don't know if, if you'd like a motion accordingly, or just something that, you know, you're, you're comfortable doing?
We were already given some instructions. At, at that time that we go out for the actual feasibility study, we would have to come back to the board at that time to, to request permission for it, because of the amount of money. We also, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
We also have to look, start looking at it at a minimum of one year before the end of of one year before the end of the contract. And in view of a feasibility study needed, I, I would suggest if, probably about at least two years before.
Let's call it two and a half to give you a little more buffer, maybe? Or three, whatever you're comfortable with. So when, the, the contract that we're entering into with them, or that we've just entered into with them, when is that slated to terminate?
It's a seven-year contract.
Okay, so we're, we're looking fairly far out in that case?
Yes, and, and let me add one thing on, and just on the numbers Yuri gave you.
Please.
The average was three hundred and fifty thousand is what I was told it was for each, at least for each piece of equipment. That would be twenty-seven and a half million. That's the capital investment that's needed. We still have to pay for the hundred and fifty employees as well. So that's going to be, you know, whatever the cost of that would be on top of that, plus all the support that Yuri was mentioning. Just, well, it's not just twenty million. It's, it's significantly more than that.
Well, let me, let me ask another question in that case, just as we don't have any lights on at the moment. If you think it's going to run about three hundred thousand for the feasibility study, would we be putting you in a terrible spot if we put through a motion today to set aside any fines, any liquidated damages for that purpose until we hit that three hundred?
I'm not, I'm not sure it would, it would change the way we do stuff because what happens in reality with those fines, it becomes part of the cash carry forward. As part of the cash carry forward, it's not used because it's unexpected money. It gets rolled into the reserves.
Okay.
And to use those reserves, we have to come back to the board. So you can pass a motion, and it would give us a, a very direct, no questions asked about what do you got to do, so don't use it for anything else.
Yuri, would you describe what the reserve levels are now, just so the board knows?
The, the reserve levels right now, as they currently stand, are one-point-four million dollars for hurricanes, which is meant to be the local share for the hurricanes, and the collection would borrow the rest. The interest rates are, are not considered on that. And we got a, a two-month reserve for the payment of Waste Management. The reason that we have that is because the, the contract year starts in October first. The money coming from the residents start rolling in approximately at the end of May, or not May, sorry, November, and in December. So we need to have that buffer to pay Waste Management.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, I mean, if someone wants to make the motion, I'll certainly second it. I don't know if folks have a different direction, they want to go with it. But, you know, we, we do have some time. That's the one benefit. Commissioner Smith? I see you reaching over there, you're reaching for the button.
I just wanted to chime in, and, and we've got a, a long way to go with this contract, and there's going to be an entirely different board sitting here when that contract ends. I don't think we need to be jumping into anything at this point in time. We have remedies in place for their missing, their roots. Fines are, will be coming forth. So if we have an opportunity to express our displeasure with what they're doing, we can do that. But I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves to think about changing the horse before we even get down the road a little bit more. So I think we're good where we are right now.
Did anyone have anything further? Commissioner Tapia?
Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
Yuri, and the, did you do an RFP on, for the, whatever, three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand bucks? Or is that just an estimate of what you've heard in the past?
That's an estimate based on what I've heard in the past. We, we don't buy that piece of equip-, that particular piece of equipment.
No, I'm sorry, no, for the feasibility study?
Oh, we've never done a feasibility study. We did a bunch of phone calls this morning, and that's the best, more or less price that they were willing to tell us.
Okay. I, I, I'm sure that this question has come up with other municipalities nationwide. And I'm sure you're abreast, if not can be, of it relatively soon. Tell me, how, how have other government entities handled this? Are, are we seeing trends where they're going to the private enterprise to pick trash up? Or are we seeing folks going the other way from private enterprise into handling it themselves? I, I, you know, it'd be a shame to find out that, you know, that it would cost rel-, relatively similar, and we'd be out three hundred thousand dollars. You know, conversely, if we found out that we could handle that, while the capital cost may be very high initially, if that was amortized over five or six years, that may be a bargaining chip well worth the three hundred thousand dollars as, as you move forward. I just have, do you have any idea as to what your guess the outcome would be if, if we were to go in that direction?
I know, in, in the central Florida area, which is probably about seven or eight counties, what we see is that the privates are the ones that service the counties. I have seen some counties that separate their, shall we call it districts? They break it up into districts or, or areas in which they do not allow the contractor to serve more than one or two areas in order to enhance competition. But I have not seen any trend of the counties taking over the collection.
But conversely, you, you haven't seen any trends the other way around, where they could?
It's pretty much stable right now, and it has been stable for the last fifteen years.
It gives us no good indication.
All, all I've heard is of privates, counties getting out of the landfill business and going into contracting their, either their landfills or exporting garbage. That's one of the reasons that I always look at my cost of the landfill and, and make sure that we keep it under control. But that, that has occurred in the past, and, and cities or counties become more built up, and there's less space to build landfills, so they start exporting it. But as far as the collection is concerned, no, sir. I, I don't.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, and then we'll hear from Commissioners Nardi.
Would we need a consultant to put together an RFP for, for this? Or, you know, if Commissioner Lober wanted to go in that direction, a, a first step would be putting an RFP out to find out if it really is that. Maybe we get a different answer if we find, you know, a company that is willing to do it for less. Conversely, we could find, you know, that it's many times that amount. I just have no idea. But i- if we don't need a consultant, if you have the ability to put together an RFP without, I, I, you know, I don't know, other than a little bit of, or substantial potentially amount of staff time, what direct cost, you know, that we, we could find a middle ground, and it'd be, you know, less. And I appreciate you making the phone calls today and not having all that much time. But, but, you know, Commissioner Lober, if you want to go in that direction, I'd certainly support at least putting it, putting it out to find out what that feasibility, a definitive amount on that feasibility study.
I appreciate it. If there's support in the board, I, I certainly would like to. Commissioners Nardi?
Yuri, is part of the reason possibly that counties aren't doing it, and maybe it's just as simple as counties are more spread out, less dense, municipalities within the counties, that sort of thing? Because when I think about the county and, and a private versus government, I mean, you would, you'd run into the same problem that Palm Bay has. You have a lot of residential, but everybody's spread out. You have sporadic. Is, is that the reason why you don't see a lot of counties doing their own service?
The, the two cities that are in, in Brevard County, which is Titusville and Rockledge, have the, they have the advantage that they're more densely populated than the county. When Waste Management is, or anybody will be looking at rural areas versus highly dense areas or suburban areas, it costs less to deliver the service in a, in a suburban area than it does in a rural area just because of the travel time. You know, there, there's downtime regarding, or dead time between the houses. If you have five-acre houses versus having a quarter of an acre. I can have a truck that can take care of twelve hundred homes versus in a rural area, it might be only nine hundred homes. The cost to me as a collector is the same, but the cost per providing the service per resident goes up.
Right. Another unrelated question. As far as the fines, so you didn't have that number for twenty twenty. Do you have even a range or a guesstimate for what you think that number's going to look like? Is it significantly higher? Is it twenty percent higher? Is it?
My, my guess is going to be in the, and probably in the range of between what we saw in, in the first months of, of twenty thirteen. Twenty thirteen is the only thing I can compare, Commissioner, because in twenty thirteen, if, if you remember correctly, even if you were in Palm Bay, everybody was going to carts.
Yeah.
And the delivery of the carts and, and had some issues regarding it, the delivery on time and all that. So the fines were relatively high at that point because it was a problem of, of delivering the prob-, the proper service. Is the only thing I can compare us, again.
Now, is that two-hundred-and-ninety thousand? What was that number in twenty fifteen?
No, that, that was around fifty thousand for around three months.
All right, none related?
Because we're not looking at an entire year. I'm, I'm looking at the months in which we're having problems.
Another random question, because a lot of the questions are being answered as you discuss. So I appreciate the information. As far as, you know, moving forward, you know, Palm Bay's gone with a new carrier. So they'll no longer, they'll be using a carrier, I think it's in Vero, they're dumping their trash. They're not going to be using us anymore. Is that going to be helpful to us?
I'm not sure that Republic knows as far as the disposal, what they're getting into.
Because I was really shocked to hear that.
And, and when I say that, because I've had conversations with the city of Palm Bay before. I don't think the people are there anymore. But they have been wanting to take their garbage to, to Osceola County, and, and the response has been, you know, your citizens pay a, the disposal fee. It's already prepaid, so you're paying double.
I know their rates have gone up ninety-one percent.
So if Republic takes the garbage down to Vero Beach, they will be paying us, and they will be paying Vero Beach.
That's incredible to me.
Which is not the way to do proper business.
So be prepared, guys, we're going to be getting, or I should say, Commissioner Tapia, you're going to be getting a lot of phone calls when they transition their service. It's, is it September, I believe?
October first.
October first.
And we are less expensive than Indian River County.
We're also going to have the ability, and I confirm this with Waste Management, that when that contract ends, they currently have that contract. So there will be, I don't know what number, but what they said is they're good drivers. They're going to obviously have the opportunity to transfer them into the Brevard County pool of drivers.
That's good.
What should happen, Commissioner, if, if you were going to move things from out of the county, you would have to build yourself a transfer station because the transfer stations are ours for our service. So you wouldn't be able to use it. You would have to, which adds another six or seven dollars to, to the cost per ton.
Well, I know what they did is they, their initial, when they went out to RFP, because I, I live there, so of course I watch, and, you know, forty percent of my district is there. What they did was, you know, they came out with, in the original RFP, and, and the numbers were really high. Then they changed what they were willing to accept because at first Waste Management didn't even bid on that contract. I don't want to speak for them, but because they wouldn't, they couldn't come to agreement on terms, and they ended up going with terms that they said they couldn't do before. It's a long story, but, but they ended up shifting the majority of that ninety-one percent increase to the commercial, which is, you know, there's people that own businesses too, and those, those fees are going to come from somewhere. So it's just going to be interesting to see that transition, along with some of the struggles we're having now.
There are some places that commercial highly subsidizes residential.
Yeah.
Um, there's also some other stuff, and, and I did see a little bit about, about the RFP of Palm Bay. Palm Bay, their initial proposition was for the Waste Management Company to bill the citizens.
That was the issue. That's correct.
And when they did that, the last time, there was an eighty percent collection rate. That means around twenty percent didn't pay. Versus when we collected through our assessment, it's around a ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent collection rate.
I remember, I was there. I was at the city during that time.
And it makes a big difference.
Yes. But then that was something they were willing to do when they said they wouldn't, when they wanted.
And I, and I think Palm Bay changed it to Palm Bay assuming the collection.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone have anything further before we move on to board reports? Board reports, it is. Mr. Abate, I, I know that it's not pertinent to, to the discussion that we've just had, but given the time constraints on that issue with the monuments, would you give us a, a brief overview? Sorry to spring that on you, sir.
Um, yeah, there was, I received yesterday a letter from the Secretary of the Interior that was distributed by email to all commissioners. It was directed to the Board of County Commissioners, and it dealt with an executive order on a monumental park that they're looking to do on a national level for statutes and other monuments. And they're looking for an area, and one of the things that they're, they were looking for was input from, I guess, whoever they sent it to, the various elected official bodies of types of statutes that could go into this park or, and the location of the park where they wanted. And one of the criteria, as you, if you had a chance to look at that letter, was that it was a, a place of natural beauty, close to a urban area or an area which had the ability to have a, you know, significant traffic. And, and so that was the response, they want the response by July thirty-first, so there really wasn't any time to, to, to come back to a board meeting with it. So I just sent the email to Commissioners and the company executive order in case the board or any, you know, commissioner was interested in responding to that about Brevard County in any way. So that was basically all I was trying to do, was just make sure I put the notice out so you had it in case the board had an interest in, in, in responding to that. And I do have another item.
Please.
After that.
Yes, sir.
On May nineteenth, the board adopted the twenty-twenty C E M P, which provides that the Board of County Commissioners is the head of Brevard Emergency Operations. And it also provides that in the event of an emergency, when a quorum of the board is not able to meet the chair, vice chair, or district commissioner, in that ascending order of the districts, can be delegated the authority to declare a state of emergency and take all necessary emergency protective actions. On that date, the board also approved that the vice chair serve as the delegated authority until the end of the vice chair's term for the chair of the policy group. With the storm that's currently out in the Atlantic and decisions that regard protective measures that may meet, may need to be made tomorrow morning with the latest storm track and intensity, I wanted to ask the board if they would like to delegate approval of a local state of emergency to the vice chair in, in case that is needed. This will allow the emergency management team the ability to take the next steps that, in being prepared for any storm that may come. Staff would proceed with handling the storm response and declared emergency in conjunction with the policy group and the authority that the board delegates to the vice chair. You know, unless the board wants to provide some other option. We'll come back to the board next week about things outside of this storm so we can handle it for the rest of the hurricane season. But with this storm being a couple of days away, obviously, if, it's unlikely, but if there was a need to do anything with sheltering or anything, if there's a significant turn or intensification of the storm, we're not going to have the twenty-four hours to ask the board to come in. We'd have to get moving fairly quickly to move with the school board, et cetera. So I don't know if the board would like to address that issue.
If you want a motion, we can have a motion, otherwise.
Yeah, if you would, I would appreciate it.
All right, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Smith's motion. So everyone understand what we're voting on? Good deal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I just want to say, you guys keep working really, really hard to try to get this caught up and done as quickly as possible. We did have a little less complaints this week than last week, but it's still like way out of control. So everything you can do, I'm just, I'm just really asking you to try very hard and get this done as quick as possible.
Commissioner Spaya? Commissioner Smith? Commissioners Nardi?
No report.
And I, I think we've already gone over everything that was a concern to me, so I have, I have nothing further. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn it at two oh nine. Thank you all.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.